Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give the roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas. Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present except for Councilmember Cuevas.
From Cavery Chapel, South Bay, if you's in the audience.
Place your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
It's always a pleasure to be here and to be among such very distinguished individuals who are fulfilling the fathers of this city of Lawndale. And we have another father that I want to talk about, and this is the message that he has for us. Exhort therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, giving of thanks be made for all men. And that's why we're here, is to serve all men. For kings, for mayors, council members, law enforcement, fire departments, and all those who serve this community. For all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life. And because of you and this board and this chamber and those that serve this community, we have that peace. It gets out of hand once in a while, and that's to be expected. But you know, you guys are at the center and you bring everything back to a good place. And this is what he says. A peaceful life in all godliness and honesty, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of our God, our Savior. Father, I lift up this board to you, this council, our mayor, and all that are in this room that serve you. Father, we just thank you for each and every life. And Father, as they are here to share what's going on in their lives, I pray that this community here, this board, this council, Father, will hear, listen, and make a decision that is good for everyone. Father, we pray that you just bless them with wisdom. And we thank you, Father, for each person that is here, for truly they are called by you to be in this ministry over this city. And we give you thanks for their heart to serve, the wisdom they have, and the love for your kids. And we thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Bless you guys. We love you.
Thank you Pastor Dooley for those wonderful words of inspiration for joining us tonight. Continuing with our agenda, we're now on our public safety report. We hear from our Captain Allen, followed by our fire department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for June 7th through June 21st. On June 10th, at approximately 0700 hours, Deputy Doherty conducted a traffic stop at 149th Street and Hawthorne Boulevard regarding vehicle code violations. The driver was detained due to the fact that he was on active probation with search conditions. Inside his vehicle, she located live ammunition, multiple credit cards, and mail not belonging to the suspect, along with a crystal-like substance resembling methamphetamine. The suspect was arrested and booked at Safos Center Station for possession of ammunition, possession of stolen mail, and possession of methamphetamine. On June 12th, at approximately 5:00 PM, Deputy Savantin conducted a traffic stop near 147th Street and Prairie Avenue regarding vehicle code violations. The driver was determined to be unlicensed and in possession of marijuana. While searching the vehicle, he located two loaded firearms. The suspect was arrested and booked for possession of marijuana and a concealed firearm in the vehicle. In regards to crime, we are beginning to see a slight rise in burglaries and grand theft. The increase in burglaries is to be expected as people are returning to work and leaving their homes empty during the day. Though there has been an increase in burglaries at this time, we are still below pre-COVID levels. Grand theft autos are also on the rise countywide, and we need our community members to remain diligent when it comes to locking and securing their vehicles. I know during this special meeting two Fridays ago, you inquired regarding response times. Lawndale's response times are some of the best in the county. Your deputies respond to emergent calls in 3.63 minutes. This in comparison to, say, Santa Creta Station, the response time is 5.25 minutes, or say, the city of Lakewood, the response time is 4.2 minutes. We respond to priority calls in 6.83 minutes. Santa Creta does it in 13.25 minutes, and the city of Lakewood does it in 11.5 minutes. And also our routine calls, we respond to in about 32.6 minutes. Santa Creta responds in 73.54 minutes, and Lakewood responds in 55.50 minutes. I tried to give a little difference between, say, the north and the city directly to the east of us in comparison. So you see, in response to response times, we pretty much double the speed as other surrounding sheriff's station agencies. This regards, this concludes my report. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions of the captain's report? I want to thank you for that report, especially for the report of the response times. I'm glad to see that these response times are pretty good numbers.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
In terms of responding, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let's see, who else? We got one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're right before the 4th of July, any words you would like to say to the residents since this is our last council meeting before?
Yes, well, in regards to, as, Lawndale, as we know, and our surrounding agencies, obviously fireworks, legal and illegal ones, are a big problem in our city. We will be having law enforcement out, you know, definitely a period of time before the 4th of July and leading up. The city, as we all know, last year did increase fines for us catching people that are doing fireworks. We will be having fireworks suppression teams out there looking for violators. So it's obviously it's in the best interest for our community to not be lighting off fireworks, because if we are gonna be actually looking to catch you, if we can, you will be getting a serious fine. I think it starts at $1,000. And so in order to prevent that from happening, please don't do any fireworks, and let's keep Lawndale at the minimum sound that it should be, for lack of a better term.
Thank you, and I just want to give a shout out to Officer Bauer, who did a beautiful public service message that I found on my Facebook page today. And so I appreciated, it's gonna have a little sarcasm and neighbors, you know, not saying too kind of things on it, but we're doing the best that we can under the circumstances that we have. And I just appreciated him standing up and doing that message for us.
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from the LA County Fire Department, Station 21.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for having me here today. I'm gonna talk about the run report for LA County Fire Department for the city of Lawndale. Total calls for the city of Lawndale was 124. Thirty-three of those calls were good intent calls or our fire resourceers were canceled en route. Ninety-four of them were medical aid calls, no reports of any fires, so no displacements in the city of Lawndale. I'd like to also take this opportunity, since 4th of July is coming up, I'd like to remind the citizens of beautiful city of Lawndale of how to celebrate responsibly. Just remember, the sale of fireworks begins June 27th, starting at noon, and it ends July 6th at noon time. Any firework that goes in the air is illegal. Only use of fireworks that are labeled "safe and sane," and you'll see that in the container. They have to have that "safe and sane" label. Those are the only ones you will be able to use. Keep an eye on your pets, and remember that pets become terrified with loud and unfamiliar noises. Some of the safety tips, always read the instructions on the box before you use the fireworks. Use common sense. Store fireworks in a cold and dry place. Do not make your own fireworks. We found that some people sometimes will alter fireworks, so don't alter them. When you do light them, keep them away from buildings, vehicles, flammable objects, and especially with our drought, keep them away from drought, dry vegetation. Have a bucket of water and a hose nearby in case of accidents. Don't point fireworks at anyone. Be sure to light one firework at a time. Never light something in a container. Never relight a firework that's a dud or that's previously malfunctioned. Keep your kids, I'm sorry, kids should not play with fireworks. Typically, children ages 10 to 14 have the highest rate of firework injury. Don't play with fireworks when you're intoxicated or impaired. Sparklers, a popular one, should only be used on the outside and kept away from the face, clothing, and hair. What to do if someone does get injured? Make sure you call 911. If you get burned, remove your clothing from the burned area, cool the area with cold water. Don't use Vaseline and seek medical attention. If you do, if someone does incur an eye injury, don't touch or rub it, don't flush with water or try to put ointment on it. Protect the injured eye and get medical care right away. Some fun alternatives, glow sticks. It's something. So kids, they love glow sticks. They could wave it around, they could make jewelry, they could make glasses out of them. We also encourage families to attend a public fireworks show conducted by state-licensed pyrotechnicians. For a listing of professional fireworks shows, you can type fire.lacounty.com on the web, and they will update a list of different places where you can watch fireworks. From last year's 4th of July celebration, I'm happy to report that there was no fires here in the city of Lawndale. And I think with the enforcement, sheriffs have done a good job, and the citizens have done a good job about reporting. We did get a report of one injury, and they accessed the 911 system. I also tried to get the reports from different hospitals, the five local hospitals here in the city of Lawndale. I didn't get a response from Gardena Memorial or Sentinella. However, Harbor General Hospital, U.S.A., reported nine firework injuries. Torrance Memorial reported six. Little Company and Mary reported zero. I'm also happy to report that this year, just like last year, we will be conducting a month-long study of fires and injuries through our reporting system. So I should be able to have those numbers for you next year as well. It started this past 13th, June 13th, and it's gonna go on till July 11th of 2022. That's all I have for you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions of the fire department's report?
Thank you for the information. That was really good information that you shared with us. I'm going to ask if we can put on the city website that, website that he just gave out for the professional shows, and a safe place to go for, we could scroll through and see where the local, where the professionals are doing it. I think that would be helpful.
And that's fire.lacounty.com.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is where you have the opportunity to speak to this board on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body that are items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just come to the podium. If you would start with your name first, I'll call you in just a second after I give this 20-minute disclaimer. If you just, when you come to the podium, if you just start with your name, we appreciate that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on that'll give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Now let's have our first speaker. Yes, sir.
My name's Samuel Cruz, and I've been living in the city for my entire life, so I'm 30, so 30 years. I grew up on Wharf Lane in Lawndale. I own three properties in the city of Lawndale. One that I recently just purchased, and another one that Cynthia will be talking about is our personal home. So I've been dealing with the city. They've been stating that they're understaffed. Understaffed, I've been dealing with Jared and Adrian, and this is nothing against them personally, but they've been, not them, but the city's been dragging their feet as far as getting our permits approved. We've been paying a lot in taxes, we've been paying a lot in, you guys, this whole process in pulling a permit. It's very expensive, and it takes a lot of time, and it's having me to come down here consistently. I'm here, I'd say about two times a week now. You guys could look at your guys' log, I'm following up on my personal house and my rental property that I'm trying to get rented out. My problem is that we bought this house on Manseal as a rental property to invest in our future, and me and my kids' future and my family. I've stated to them numerous times that I gotta get the ball rolling. I said, we're just doing basic upgrades, electrical, plumbing, flooring, which doesn't need permitting, windows and cabinetry, again, that doesn't need permitting. We're not adding on and we're not taking down anything. We're complying with what Jared has said. We gotta tear down our carport patio and a patio cover that's in the backyard. I completely understand, as I'm a contractor, a general contractor, and a C-36 licensed plumber. And I recently had the hurdles of having to prove that I wasn't working out of my home and that I had a business. And believe me, it was very hard to prove that, and I told them just to check the website to state that our address is there. So today, I went back down there to the city, and I asked to speak with Sean, wanting to get this expedited, because I can't wait. We're waiting, and it's basic procedures. I deal with this every single day. Cities are approving these projects in a day everywhere else, if it's not an add-on. If it's not an add-on, they're approving this, all these problems within a day. I stated to Sean, like, hey, I drew a site plan in front of the Hermosa City, and they approved it. Adrian was right there in the conversation, and Sean Moore was in the conversation, and one of the comments that...
Time's expired.
Unfazed.
...in Lawndale if you don't mind. I've never said I never loved my city. I love the city of Lawndale, and I purchased in the city of Lawndale because I love my city, and this is my home.
Okay. Thank you for that, and those words. Let's hear from our next speaker. Yes, Mayor?
Hi, my name is Cynthia Gonzalez, and I am Sam's wife. So we're having the problem with the Manseal property that we just purchased. We're not able to pull permits, nothing but hurdles and excuses, and, oh, we submitted it to this person, I followed up with that person, they never received it. But I'm not even gonna talk about that one anymore. I'm gonna go back to my personal property. We have a small home. When I found out I was pregnant with my baby, she's now six months, we decided to add on to my home. I started pulling, we started the process. My daughter's now six months old, and I have yet to receive approved plans. What's taking so long? There is no reason for the permitting to take over a year for us to get, be able to add on to the home. It's unacceptable, and it's, you guys are not working diligently, and nobody's working to try to help the constituents of Lawndale. Nobody cares. Everybody's blaming everybody else, and it's frustrating. Like, we're trying to do it the right way. I think what's happening is, you guys want us to start the work, so you guys can come back and find us for it. That's what I think is actually going on. So I'm asking that whatever's going on, you guys fix it, because we want to be here, we have three homes here, we want to continue to be here. This is where I grew up, I've been here for 30 years, I have my kids here, they go to the schools here. I want Lawndale to look good. I want all the properties to look good. I want my property values to go up. I don't understand why nobody else in the city council wants the houses to look better. Why do we keep fighting for these houses to stay old? You guys don't want anything updated. It's frustrating, and I have to come, I have my baby to take care of, and I have to come here too, follow up, make sure I'm on the phone, leaving voicemails, hey, what's the status, sending emails. Can I just be a mom and then just be able to support and be there and just get approved plans? It's not that hard, because I assist in getting approved plans throughout, everywhere else. That city of La, I mean, city of LA, Torrance, Manhattan Beach, everybody else, I can go in there same day, pull permits, and leave. We do the work, I call for inspection, they come out, we're done. City of Lawndale, it's been over a year, and I don't have approved plans. What is going on? There is no positions open for building and safety, so what are you guys doing to help? I'm frustrated. I'm extremely frustrated. Every time I come in, there's other people in here that are frustrated because they're waiting. So I'm asking that you guys really work on getting this fixed. It's a serious problem that needs addressing now.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Earlier this month, the San Mateo Police Department obtained illegal fireworks and explosives from an undercover operation. After police received information about fireworks dealer in San Mateo County, a police officer posed as somewhat interested by fireworks from the suspect and met this suspect in a parking lot. Not only were illegal fireworks confiscated, but a caliber firearm, illegal drugs and other fireworks. Also this month, officers in Costa Mesa so far have seized more than 600 pounds of a contraband explosives being sold in Costa Mesa, and recently assisted in the seizure of another 1,000 pounds in San Bernardino, police reported Wednesday. Undercover detectives arranged purchases through online marketplaces like Craigslist, Facebook Marketplace, and OfferUp, where individuals advertise illicit fireworks with much more prior power than the safe and sane fireworks allowed in some California communities. These are just two recent examples of confiscating illegal fireworks before they can be blasted. This is a promising component of the city of Lawndale's fireworks suppression program presented on April 18th, 2022. The city of Lawndale hopes to have any impact in proactively reducing illegal fireworks, cutting off the supplies essential. Fireworks in the US emit about 60,340 metric tons of CO2 every year. To put that in perspective, that's a bit more than what, 12,000 gas-powered cars emit in a year. Furthermore, fireworks emit a significant amount of ozone, which is also greenhouse gas, as well as secondary pollutants, according to a study published in the journal Nature. A scientist told Forbes that when the fireworks go off, the metal salts and explosives undergo a chemical reaction that releases smoke and gases into the air. That includes carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, and nitrogen, three greenhouse gases that are unfortunately responsible for climate change. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, these particle pollutants pose the greatest risk to health, as they're more easily able to get into your lungs and bloodstream. Here's the kicker. During and even several days prior to national holidays and festivals, these daily PM2-5 concentrations have been two to 10 times greater than background levels. These levels were especially elevated on July 4th and 5th, harming both the planet and people. For the city of Lawndale to present itself as having an interest in reducing the carbon footprint seems to be hypocritical when it allows and encourages the sale of safe and sane fireworks. If Lawndale really wants to contribute to any carbon reduction program, perhaps it should start with something it can control. Unfortunately, the city council did not even want to put the measure of safe and sane fireworks on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor?
Good evening. Just really quick, I want to ask by the sheriffs, why don't they pull over more cars with this limousine tent constantly? You see more and more cars with limousine tent, you can't see the driver, you can't tell who's behind the wheel or what have you. I bet you they'd find a lot more firearms too that way. And also really quick, I noticed there's a residence that got a permit, and they put in a concrete walkway. But what's so interesting is this concrete walkway is actually perfect for their car to park. So can you get a walkway installed and then turn it into your parking pad? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to thank all those who spoke this evening. Let's bring it to the dice for any comments from the council.
I have one for the young couple. Why is it taking so long for permits back a year? Because I know we had a situation with another resident owner that we had expedited, because there was almost two years. Why is the delay? And I know we're gonna say because we only have one contractor from LA County, but, you know, a year is ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor, council, I wasn't aware of the situation until I talked to staff. The property owner approached me when I was at the backside of the building in City Hall. But after I met with staff, I got apprised of the situation. I'll let Ms. Chavez fill in the council, and then Mr. Reyes. There's a lot more detailed information I did not have while we were talking with the property owner to provide some background.
Mr. Mayor and the council, Jer Chavez with the Community Development Department. So just to give you a little bit of background on his property of where he lives, it was submitted on July 1st of 2021, and then it was, there was three comment letters that were sent out with comments from Rafael Garcia, which is no longer here, and then it was conditionally approved in September of 2021. So that was, it was usually like a really quick turnaround within nine to 10 business days. And then in December, January, actually, we received an email from the property owner saying that they wanted to put the project on hold, because the architect made changes that they did not approve. So they wanted to go back and talk to their architect and see what had happened. And then not until actually May of 2022, which was this year, that's when we received the new application with the changes and the new project that they wanted to go ahead and do, instead of what they had previously approved. So I did take that, talked to them at the counter, take that into consideration, and we actually gave them a comment letter within five business days. We received the plans from the applicant right away, so I believe it was about nine days from the architect. Another comment letter was given to them within six business days. And then finally, they resubmitted on the 9th of June of this month. So at this point, we're actually reviewing the plans, and I did talk to them and let them know that I was gonna have something for them this week. And that was for their, for their house. And the reason why it took so long was because of that three-month hold that they requested. And continuing...
Well, usually, we don't, we just have the comments from the staff, and then we get together individually or what have you, but we don't do a back and back.
I do have emails with correspondence from the applicant to prove this. And then the other case, 1561 for Manseal, that is a code enforcement case that was stop-work order received from Jamie on the 18th of May. And we did approve them for their submittal right away within four business days. Then they submitted on the 13th to building plan check, and they received comments today, which technically, it's been since May 18th, and so about a month maybe, at the most, that they, they're already in plan check and they already received comments. So just to let you know that that's what's going on with their projects.
Okay, is there any other comments on this item?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you. This is Michael, I just want to comment a little bit on that, just to clarify some things. Not every development is a code case. If people submit plans and just want to add to their homes, code enforcement is not involved. So we are only involved in a property of 15641 Manseal. We received a complaint from the Building Inspector Kumar in the middle of May of this year, saying work was being done without permits. Jamie went, made contact with the people at the home, gave them a stop-work order and asked them to submit plans and permit, submit plans to get permits to do the work. Those plans were submitted fairly quickly, they're still being reviewed. This is only about seven weeks ago, but again, we got involved because work was happening without permits, including a tear-down, a demolition of parts, of things inside the house. To the resident's comments earlier, he was mentioning he was only doing plumbing, electrical, and some other things. Those are fairly significant changes. Anything involving plumbing, he's a plumbing permit. Anything involving electrical work is an electrical permit, plus any mechanical permit. Anything involving electrical work is an electrical permit, plus any mechanical permits for construction or tear downs. To say that he's not adding on doesn't mean it's going to be any less difficult. There's still a lot of things involved with electrical work, planning, electrical work, plumbing and any kind of construction. So again, the delays, it is a back and forth process. Plans are submitted, they're reviewed and corrected to make sure they meet the requirements of the city. Then they're resubmitted and then permits are issued after that and then work can begin. Work should never begin without any kind of permits from the city so that we know that the building materials are being properly meet our codes, make sure that fire blocking is included, make sure that footings are correct. All these things are for the safety of the resident and the community. So again, we only have a property, a code case on the Mansell property, but we discovered work being done without permits and that's why we were involved.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
That's it, that's all I have.
No, that's not part of our protocol. We just take comments from the public, the staff or the council respond. You definitely welcome to the conference with the department head and our city manager, but we don't, it's not a back and forth dialogue. Let's go to our next company. Madam, council, will we know its word?
Okay, thank you to everybody that came out and spoke. I do have follow-up questions regarding the permit process that we have, generally speaking. I would like to see kind of a list of what are the popular permits that are pulled for basic home improvements. I do get complaints quite often about some of the basic upgrades that are being done and how much it costs. And I'm wanting to see that to compare it with other cities and kind of see, are we requiring more than other cities for some basic stuff? For example, I think you need to have a permit to even like change out a fixture or something like, I'm not quite sure. I think I was reading through them, maybe that's not the case. But just so I understand how we are in part with other cities and making sure that it is easy for residents, you know, some cities require them, some don't. And I'm more of the thought that if it's a basic home improvement, to make sure that there's not deferred maintenance, that we make our processes easy as possible. And if it doesn't need to be certain steps required, I'm more of the thought of making it for residents at least as easy as possible. So that's a larger question, but I would like to see what the popular permits that are pulled look like and costs and how we compare to other cities. And then that's all I have. I think Dina brought up a question about the tents. So that's something we can speak to the sheriff's department about and maybe have them give a little update on how they go about that or what their protocol is. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Pro Tim.
I agree with Bernadette. I'd like to see the same type of information that she just spoke about. Thank you to all of you speakers that came out to speak tonight. Dina, I'd like to know more about this walkway that's been made into a parking pad. Is the city aware of it? Okay, can you guys get with her and get me some information on that?
Correct. We write a lot of lawn parking citations. If they were permitted for a walkway, it's not permitted for a parking lot. So I'll get the address and we'll.
Thank you.
Mr., I can respond to that. So what happens is for the council, all the years I worked in community development, what folks do is this is why we had hesitation with decomposed granite. They're not, staff's been directed not to approve any sidewalks, any decomposed granite on any driveway areas because they become parking pads. So maybe we'll check this out and find out what happened. Maybe someone slipped through and pushed it over because what they'll typically do, they'll put any hardscape, rocks, decomposed granite, no landscaping, anything so they can turn them in surreptitiously later on after we approve them, they turn them into parking pads and that happens on a daily basis. That's why that permit fee that has been brought up several times by the council, the flatwork, it covers the cost for staff to investigate it, to approve it and to go and review it and finalize it, not just once, but at least four or five times sometimes because folks try to, you know, it's a give and take with residents, you know, they want to put, because we know, we don't, we don't get invasive in what they're doing, but in the end we hear from the residents that'll bring this to our attention that they've turned it into a parking pad. And this is very typical.
Yeah, I remember firsthand one property that did exactly that. And the remedy was they ended up putting, agreeing to put these these huge platters, if I'm saying the words right, about three of them, which is really difficult to, you can't move them, but it's pretty, you know, you're not just going to move them, then move them back and forth like that because they're pretty, pretty heavy or what have you. And that's exactly what they were doing. It was turned into a parking, parking space or what have you. This was some years ago, what have you. But I want to thank those who spoke tonight, who came out to speak tonight, you know, public comments and also for the, the couple who came about the permit process, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll definitely, we'll watch this process closely. I do, everyone knows that we're, you know, we're trying our best to streamline our processes. We would like to have our processes as easy as possible, streamlined as possible. At the same time, allow staff or inspectors or what have you to do their due diligence to make sure the projects are done correctly because we want to make sure that the community is safe and these projects are safe for the community. Not only look good, but that they actually are safe as well, not only for the occupants, but for the community as well, the neighbors as well. So sometimes that might be a reason why there's a delay or what have you. But we definitely want to streamline our processes as much as possible. I'm also interested, as we kind of, we discussed this before, just looking at our, our permit, not the process, but the, the amount of various permits. Although we recently adopted a permit schedule, but I do agree, we should take a look at a permit to make sure that we're in, we're running in sync, I guess I would say, with other comparable cities as well. But we will take a look at this issue and just make sure your issues are resolved onto the property owner so that we can get this resolved as soon as possible because we want you in your home as soon as possible and, and be living comfortably in your home as soon as possible. You know, that's, that's always our goal. But thank you for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate it. With that also, yeah, the, yeah, the tent, the heavy tent on cars, I guess that's not a, I don't, I'm not going to say it's not a priority, but it's in, no matter what city you go in, you'll see heavy tent on cars, which is illegal, but they're there, you know. So I would imagine that somebody said that's not a priority for law enforcement because, I mean, there's millions of cars with that tent on, you know, what have you. They probably will see more without that tent, but I can't really speak for the sheriff department if that's something that they will pull people over for. I don't, matter of fact, I don't think it's something they'll pull you over for. It might be incidental to. Well, yeah, there's a whole bunch of vehicle codes violation, but it doesn't mean they'll pull you over for it. But, but they could write your ticket, you know, if they pull you over for something else. I mean, obviously they could pull you, but that's not, it hasn't been the practice from what I understand. There's a whole bunch of vehicle codes that fits in that category. Matter of fact, I was, I was with someone, this was a while ago, this story with a sheriff deputy years ago and he said, almost every car I can find something that I technically can pull over for. That's just, just a fact, right? Okay, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. And next, I think that's all we have. And that's all the comments. And of course, we took note of that, Mr. Randall, about the fireworks. Thank you as well. Okay, with that, we'll move our agenda ahead. We're moving to the consent calendar. There's two items, well, more than two, one, two. Seven items on the consent calendar. Yeah, there's seven items on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure?
Well, if there's no subtraction or additions, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Kearney that we accept the consent calendar. Seconded by Suarez. Is there any, any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously with council member Cuevas absent.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, under administration, item eight, award of a contract for construction inspection services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm filling in for Julian today, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer as best as I can. So as the council knows, we have our street improvement program, the CIP, capital improvement and our street pavement management system. The item before you for consideration is a word of the construction and inspection services for FY 2021, 22 Annual Street Improvement Project. Staff had provided on page two of the staff report, a list of streets and the length of the streets and square footages. And I'll go off the table there. It provided for Kingsdale, which is community development grant money and 169th Street from Hawthorne Boulevard to Gravella Avenues and from 145th Street to 147th. And then SB 1 funding for streets, provided the names, 167th, 67th Alley behind Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And then a list of the streets that are subject to Measure N, Measure R and general fund expenditures to repave the streets. And the quantity and square footages are adjacent in the, in the column below on the end of the table. Staff, there was a little minor mishap on the estimate, estimate cost estimate, so we're bringing that back. It was, it was estimated to be $1.38 million. However, the revised engineer's estimate came out to 1.95. So 1.950,000 based on a more comprehensive evaluation of the project. And then on April 28th, five contractors bid it and submitted bids for the road improvements for this list of streets. And the bid results are as followed, is Caliban, 1.4, Sequel Contractors, 1.5, Hardy and Harper, 1.9, and then All American Asphalt, 2.4, and then Pulp Industries, DM Businesses of Excel Paving, 2.3. Staff reviewed the proposed bids and awarded the recommending award of the bids to, the word to Caliban Incorporated. They came in as the lowest bid with the most comprehensive bid. So based on the proposals that they provided. And then the second part of the staff report and the action for consideration is a management company to manage all these street repaving. It's quite comprehensive and we need to hire someone outside to help manage all the street repaving. So staff put together, and none of the street, the street paving is covered under all the funds. They're not coming directly out of the general fund. The recommended, there was five bidders, Inner West, SA, KOA, Infrastructure and RKA Consulting Group. I discussed in detail with the Public Works Director, Julian, who can be here tonight unfortunately, and he recommended, although they're somewhat higher than SA and Associates, 107,000, 107,980 dollars, a little bit higher than SA and Associates. The other, the other bids, three through five, they were out, they were way outside the range. So, but based on the conversation with Julian, that this was the most comprehensive bid for the type of comprehensive management service of these roads. And just to point out to the council, unfortunately, Julian has lost both his engineers and his assistant and associate engineer. So at this time, we definitely have, council's approved part-time staff, augment staff his work, but this, this person that would be coming in from this firm would be overseeing these upgrades of these roads. This concludes staff report. Again, staff recommends going with Caliban Incorporated and then awarding the construction inspection services to Inner West Consulting Group and approve the construction contingency of 210,000. That's normal in that this level of work. Actually, it's right in that range based on, you know, contingencies for short. Because, you know, sometimes when we tear up the roads in the city, we find out there's more needed in rehabilitated roads. So this is a good amount for the contingency. This concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer your questions, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for the staff report and the city manager. Any?
I'd just say I have one little observation. Sean, you said they made a little bit of mistakes, $600,000, not a little bit of mistake. I hope that engineer that did this is no longer, he was probably terminated, I hope, because $600,000 is not a little bit.
I wasn't, well, that's, I stand corrected. It was a mistake and the costs. But with the rising costs daily with inflation, those numbers change rapidly. And as the council knows, sometimes I would have to bring back the approved list from the community development block grant because LACTA is very strict Los Angeles County Development Authority. And when you change those numbers, sometimes those costs of that grant don't cover those actual costs. And apparently, based on the, I'm not defending the staff members' mistake, but definitely it was an underestimate, so we had to fix that underestimate to get it back. I would say it's significant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? Item eight, what is the pleasure of this board concerning item eight?
Well, if there's no other questions or additions or tractions, I'll make go with staff recommendation.
And I'll second it.
Motion's been made by.
Did we read all that or just?
Mr. Kearney, that we accept the staff recommendations on, on the warrant of the contractors for the actual work as well as the inspection, not inspection, but management of the work. Seconded by Councilwoman Suarez, is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, also the contingency award as well.
As well as the contingency amount is in your motion as well, right? Yes. And second as well, yes. Contingency amount as well. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Seeing that, I'm going to ask the council to vote on the motion, please.
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously with council member Cuevas absent.
Thank you, madam. Item number 10, amendment to a contract for professional services agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Paul Miles. This is the, an amendment for the contract for professional services agreement with the, with our consultant, Michael Baker International, for the CDBG Administration and Labor Compliance Services. This ties into the previous item as the two streets that were added into the 2021 and 2022 budget for the CBDG grant changed the labor compliance amount needed for, to pay our consultant. So in this situation, staff has requested an additional $15,000 added to the 2021, 2022 budget for CDBG. Our consultant, Michael Baker, has already requested LACTA to be, to make that amendment, but we do need to amend our contract with the consultant in order to be able to pay the amount, the, the previous bills that were sent over to the city. We, we need to be able to pay that extra cost for the labor compliance of the two streets that were not previously added by the, by staff. So we are requesting an additional $15,000 and that will bring it to a total of $64,327 and that will be covered by the CBDG grant. Staff is requesting that the city council approve the professional services agreement amendment with Michael Baker International for the CBDG Administration and Labor Compliance Services. Staff concludes, staff report.
Okay, thank you for the report. Are there any discussion on this item concerning this amendment, contract amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I could add a little bit of detail too. So the labor compliance component, so the council knows, is related to the first, is related to the community development block grant streets only on the first item and all the labor compliance, all of the requirements from HUD and Los Angeles County. Significant amount of changes and in order to be compliant with that grant funding, we have to provide labor compliance reporting.
Absolutely. What is the pleasure of this body concerning item nine?
Well, if there's no additions or tractions, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
Seeing no additions or substitutions.
To approve professional services agreement with MBI for the CDBG Administration and Labor Compliance Services.
We got it.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Pet Kearney that we accept staff recommendation and seconded by Madam Pro Tim Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? The council, please vote.
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously with council member Cuevas absent.
Thank you, madam. Next item, item 10, fiscal year 2022, 23 appropriations limit. Let's have staff report.
Mr. Mayor, the finance director will provide the staff report.
I thank you. This is the annual required 2022, 2023 GAN limit report and for the report, we are in compliance. And that concludes the report. There's really not much to report.
Okay, so you are compliant. So you are in compliance with the?
Yes.
The gains, gains initiatives are prop for report. Okay.
If there's no?
With that, yeah, we, yeah, there's a resolution to be adopted. Go ahead, madam.
If there's no questions or concerns, I'll vote that we go with staff's recommendation and adopt this resolution, CC 2206-034.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made by Suarez that we adopt staff recommendation with, by approving the said resolution or attached resolution, and it's been seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. And I don't believe the city attorney needs to read the resolution, right? Then you need to read, Madam City Attorney, right?
I can go ahead and read it, though, just to cover our bases. Resolution number CC 2206-034, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Landale, California, approving the appropriations limit for the fiscal year ending June 20th, June 30th, 2023.
Okay. With that being said, the motion's been made. I did make the motion. I did recognize the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. With the council, please vote.
For item number 10, motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas absent.
Thank you. Number 11, the annual budget for fiscal year 22, 23. Let's have the staff report.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is the resolution for the annual, for fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget. Staff is recommending council to approve the budget of 43,782,833 for 22, 23. And that is across all city funds. Just to kind of go over a couple of quick numbers, we do have an estimated beginning fund balance for the general fund of 26.5 million and estimated ending of 26.8 million, which gives us a $300,000 surplus for 22, 23. And, and staff is recommending that Resolution 2206-035 be approved as presented.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Who wants to speak on this item? I was looking for some notes. I had jotted down. Does anyone want to speak on this item?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On a budget meeting, are we going to adopt this and then amend it if we have to for the wage, what's it called, salary?
Yes. Before we, Mayor, City Council, before we get into the, of the, into the kind of nitty gritty things that we discussed during the, during the special meeting, what I would recommend is that we go ahead and approve as, as presented. And if there are any changes that need to be made, that they be made through an amendment, just to keep it as clean as possible, because there are different components that could affect different pieces of it.
Okay. Well, if that is no other questions, I'll go with staff recommendation, accept the budget as written.
But if there is amendment, we can do that?
Yes.
Tonight, right?
Right. Can we do it tonight?
After we have a, is, is that right or?
So you would bring this item back potentially to bring it, an amendment back? Or the question is whether you can make this change tonight in terms of any changes to the budget?
Right.
Yes. If our closed rooms, if our closed door session results in the need to amend the budget, can we do that tonight?
No, because at that point, it would be an amendment to this. And so what I would recommend is to come back after having presented that, that amendment that's being considered.
Well, then can we continue until after our closed session and then come back and vote on it?
Sure.
Maybe we should do that.
That was going to be a question of mine, too. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that way we don't have the need to amend it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So we'd need a motion, we would need a motion then to continue this or to move the item down at a later, after the closed session.
Well, we can do, I can just move the item down with the?
That's right.
With the, what's it called, unanimous consent of the, of the council, because it's going to be in the same meeting, so.
Yeah, that works, Mr. Mayor.
We don't have to do that.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So notwithstanding that, unless there are other issues that we want to address on the, on, on?
Mr. Mayor, I think the council provided some direction, I don't know, on the extra festival, music festival.
Okay.
Wanted to add that in as well. I know it's not part of the budget. It's estimated to be, from Mr. Estes provided an estimate, it's estimated roughly like the, like 12,000 to 14,000.
And we can consider that, too?
Yeah.
When we come, tonight as well?
We would want to add that, you can add that as a placeholder. We can bring back another item later on for, for clarification and just check with the term, make sure I don't break the rules. And, and we could bring it back for further consideration to the council. But we could, you know, have like a placeholder in the budget for that and bring it back for the second fest, music festival or similar.
Yes. Okay. So we'll do that. We'll, we'll consider that additional 12,000 for the second festival as well as any items related to wages after we have our negotiations. Tonight.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that being the case, let's look at what we have on the rest of the agenda. Why don't we do this? Why don't we do the rest of the agenda so we have all this after the way like normal, normally, closed session, and then we come back to 11:00?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. Okay. All right. So?
You have, you have item 12.
We have the city manager's report.
Uh, you, let's see.
It's no, I, it's, there's, there's no numbers, H.
Oh, sorry.
Letter H, city manager's report.
No, no, no items reported, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, item 12 would be, under items from the council members, a letter of support and personal note to the legislators of the South Bay, doesn't say South Bay, I'm jumping again, legislator of the city council supporting the South Bay Council of Government's state funding request. Let's hear from, you want to leave this?
Yeah. So I brought this forward, and I think the reason I brought it forward is because in there, there was the request for funds regarding compliance with SB 1383 specifically. So from what I understand, the city's going to have to, that mandate was not funded, unfunded mandate. And so particularly what I liked about this letter, and it's kind of just a letter just to see if, you know, they'll budget all. But I was hoping that if there are funds, that we could use those as a city, because from what I understand, we have a compliance in 2024, I think, or just with regards to procuring the whole organics waste. And I think our city has to reach a certain level of complying with it themselves. And I don't know how that looks like. I don't know if staff knows how we're going to go about complying it. But, you know, this was just, it included other stuff, but that was mainly the reason I brought it forward. You know, just to see since there was a surplus at the state and see if this has any grabs to help particularly with our city.
So you said it was SB 39 that?
1383, the organics waste. So there's, the, the regular residents have to comply, but from what I understand, there's also a compliance component for the city itself, which I don't know how we're, I don't know if staff maybe has an update on, on that. But this would basically help cities, at least the South Bay cities, with compliance with regards to that as facilitated through the COG.
Well, I know residential, we're one of the top ones in the South Bay as far as waste, waste, because we talked to Don Harris, which is a representative, our representative liaison, and she says Landale's one of the top, the top three that are doing the waste properly.
There's different phases for it, yeah.
And I don't know about the city, but I'm sure the city, you're talking about the city, city of Landale or total city?
Every, from what I understand, or when I was reading it, is every jurisdiction has to also comply with it. And I think they call it procuring these organic wastes that can be used in turn for stuff like renewable energy or mulch and stuff like that. So from what I understand, cities also have a compliance component to it. And then I think also restaurants are going to be in the next phase as well. But this would help the city with their compliance component of it. I mean, there's other stuff mentioned in here, which, you know, solar, looking at some of those energy efficiency, but I think that was the one is, and I don't know, maybe we can get an update from staff on how city's planning to comply with the, the mandate.
So I, oh, go ahead, sir. I can kind of address some.
Well, before we lose that train, train of thought, because mine's on a different track, go ahead and respond.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So the information we received, we, basically, it's, what the plan from the COG is to work with the South Bay cities and to develop, you know, renewable energy and electrical storage programs. So we already, as a city, we already try to, we have a climate action plan, as the council is aware. And I attached all the information from, from the executive director over there. And then also want to implement a local use vehicle ecosystem, zero emissions, scalable option for, in support of hyper local traffic patterns in the South Bay. So it's more regional, that's what the COGS can do, developing regional programs and including the development of regional organics waste projects program related to what the council member Suarez brought up, related to the organics for restaurants as well as commercial and industrial uses, because right now the council adopted the residential component of it. But this, there's, there's more expansion going on, and they're, and they're trying to tackle this at the COG. So they're bringing this forward. What, what they want to do is develop a, a new, a new program where they sustain, it's called the, they want to create a center for sustainable and resilient neighborhoods. So like a new, like a new program and a new center for the South Bay cities to work within these guidelines of these programs. And so they're looking for support, it's a support letter for it, and they're requesting a funding of $5 million. I don't know if I missed anything.
You wanted to add to that for?
No, it's basically what Sean said. My whole thing was the whole organics waste, because it's in phases and we're going to, there's going to be next phases future. And so this was, I think, a possible source of funding for us. You know, there's no guarantees here. I think it's kind of just, hey, let's throw it out there and see if anything sticks. But that's why I brought it forward.
Thank you. What I was looking at is that, I mean, I can appreciate the, making sure that the city, I having a good understanding of the city's compliance efforts and how close we are to compliance or being in compliance and monitoring that. What I find kind of curious that posed me to need more information is according to their, their memo here, and the, the city manager kind of, kind of mentioned it a little bit, it says that the COG, to create a center for sustainable, sustainable and resilient neighborhoods, as you can see from the attached letter, the funds would be, allow us to move forward with solar initiatives, regional organic waste education, the local travel network, neighborhood centers, and advancing the city's climate action plan implementation steps. So it sounds like a whole center is going to be funded, and I'm not sure about the local travel network. I don't know what that is. Neighborhood centers, I don't know what that is. Solar initiatives, I mean, I know what a solar initiative is, but what does it entail? I don't know from the COG standpoint.
So the?
Yeah.
It's kind of a shared pool. So it's one of those things where, and we've benefited from some. I think we just had some improvements, the Redondo Beach, which we use some of them. So the way it works is they kind of distribute it. It's no guarantee you're right that our city would get it, but, you know, there, there are funds there that you apply and you put your proposals forward and ask and try and get some of the funds. And then with regards to the local travel network plan, that one's been around for a while. Basically, it's to try and locate safe streets for people to use rather than a vehicle and maybe use such as golf carts or bikes and kind of travel, locate, and people can travel that way as alternative to driving cars and such like that. So, you know, it was just one of those things, I didn't know if anyone had interest. If there's no interest on this council to, to write the letter, that's fine. It was just, you know, bring it forward. They bring forward every once in a while stuff to kind of look at, to help implement. So I think it's helpful to, you know, bring it forward and have a discussion about it.
I guess, I guess, at least for me, I would be more comfortable if I had more information on some of these. You, you remind me of the local traffic network, but neighborhood centers, I'm not really sure of what, what that means.
We can ask them to provide more information and bring this back at a later time. That way you guys have more information.
Yeah. Solar initiative.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, maybe they can just give us some more information, then we'll bring it back.
Okay. We'll do that.
Is that, is that okay with the body?
If the council wants.
I think, though, I don't know if there's an expiration because of the budget, the state. They were trying to push this through for the state. So, you know what you can always do, let's just not, and then individual members, if they like what it is, you can send your own personal letter as they, as they also put on.
Yeah, that's true, too. Yeah, you're right. Okay. But thank you for placing that on the, on the agenda for this discussion. But we can always get more information, too. All right. Let's move to item three. Any reports from the mayor or council members? Let's start with, Mr. Curry.
Okay. I attended three, three things. The Lobby Trust and Oversight for the sheriffs. The contract's still steady, 11%, three and a half, I think it'd be on our budget. I attended the city council, LA County Sheriff's Little Suare. We had some good information, questions answered. And then I attended the Landale Health Safety and Pet Fair last Saturday. It was fantastic. The kids loved it. Little Shawnee loved it. So that's all I had to, to point.
And I had the same events. What I did want to make note, which was interesting to me at least, which might be interesting to some parents, in our sheriff's quarterly meeting, was at the LA County Board of Supervisors, is going to be looking at voting on whether or not to remove law enforcement personnel on school campuses. I guess there's a thought that it harms students there. So even though the, I think the schools and the cities that do have them fund them, or the schools fund them, I believe. So that's up for discussion, I think, later this month. I think it was the 28th or something, I heard. So just wanted to make note of that. And then, yes, the fair was, was great. The mayor embarrassed the rest of the council, made us dance on the stage. But it was really, it was really a good event. I had fun. We even had health classes, and so I got to participate in some of those. And it was really, I, I liked the additions that we had to the event. So I want to thank staff for that. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Hoffman-Gorman.
I would just like to add, on the school resource officer that the supervisors are getting ready to vote for, one of the issues that really stood out to me is the fact that that resource officer isn't paid through the sheriffs, it's actually paid through the schools. So it's interesting to me that the, the supervisors are actually having a hand in that. I attended the same two events with the meeting with the sheriff and also the pet fair. Great job to our city staff and leadership on putting it on an excellent event. Once again, I was excited to see as many dogs that came out to have their shots, to have their microchipping. And I look forward to seeing what the end results are, both in that area as well as our dog licensings on how many that we serviced at that event. I have one other question, and that would be for Jared. Are we still having the general plan Zoom tomorrow night?
So, excuse me. So the general planned meeting hasn't really been scheduled yet, since we are, I'm kind of waiting to see if we're able to do it in person over at the community center. So I, I know that the AC is being changed this week, so hopefully if we can get it out, done in July in person, that would be better so that we can have some, something for the public to actually interrupt with, interact with. And then maybe we can have our new planner also help us out. But a date will be set, and we are going to be sending out notices to people, and we'll put it on our, on our website and everything.
All right. Thank you for that update. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, I also attended the two events as well, the the sheriff's meeting with the sheriff's department and the the pet fair, the pet fair was a great event, I want to thank the staff for putting that on. And I think that was our first time being back, right, since the pandemic. Had a good, good showing, a lot of friendly pets. There was one not so friendly one, you may note of that. I think he was actually sent home, right? It's not funny, but for some reason the dog was agitated or what have you and wanted to take it out on some some other, other dogs. But that usually doesn't happen, though, whatever. But it was a nice event, nice weather for the event, so thank the staff and the volunteers and those who set up a booth that made it nice. Had some good food, actually had one, one company that I'll shout out, Go Fit, I think that's what it's called, Go Fit? Or Go For Fit, it was one of the two. So they have all these, these organic foods and what have you, and they gave out a lot of samples, some to people, a lot of samples, actually. You actually could have a whole meal, you know, and it was good food as well. And so, you know, had a good time. So that's all I want to report, my items. With that, we do have the closed session, and then we will be back to wrap up the eleven, item eleven, the annual budget. We did. Yeah, he didn't have a report, he was
He had nothing to report.
That was his report. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session and
I will, I will make the announcement, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. So the Longdale City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six and pursuant to government code sections five four nine five six point nine subsections D two and subsections D thirty.
We even got the subsections in there, all right, thank you. Okay, we have returned from closed sessions, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give a report of the closed session.
Okay.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As to item number fourteen, the the city council was briefed by the city attorney's office and staff. Direction was provided, no reportable action was taken. As to item fifteen, the city council also met in closed session. Council was briefed by the city attorney's office, direction was provided, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Madam. Next, we're gonna revisit item eleven, or continue, I should say, of item eleven, the annual budget fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. When we left off, we were, we had the budget report. There was two items that we wanted to possibly entertain. One was the addition of a music festival for approximately twelve thousand dollars and also an allocation for for wages. Well, we, well, at least let us negotiate for for wages, which would be approximately. Make sure I have this correct, I have three hundred K. Is that, was that? That's right, okay, three hundred K, those are two items that we were kind of pondering.
Yeah, those are two.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
We can adopt the budget and amend it, bringing those two forward?
Well, we won't, we won't need to amend them if we add them tonight, it won't be amended, it'll be part of the budget.
No, today you can take a look at the budget as is, you can make amended changes today and then approve it.
Yeah.
So, Robert, was that your motion for those two?
Well, I have a question.
Let's have discussion.
Yeah, about the the event, can we just, can we direct Parks and Rec to use the funds to put on the event?
I, I, we would have to look at that and see how we can use those those fundings for that event. We'd have to check, I don't know what their their bylaws are and all the requirements, but we can definitely look into that and get back to the council on specifically. I know they have a fun, a amount of funding there for that.
I think what we have to look at, though, too, is what their budget is, and if we do require them to have to pay for such an event, how sustainable is that? If they only have, you know, a certain amount of money, to think that year after year that they can support it, that's a concern of mine.
I guess I'm less concerned about it because it's like, we've canceled some of the events, like, for example, during COVID. So it's not, I guess, it's one of those things where I think it'd be newer, where I'm not as concerned as the longevity of it, because we're kind of trying it out in some ways, but that's just my opinion.
Well, yeah, plus the, they wouldn't be necessarily on the obligation to to fund it throughout the years. That's something that we could, we could look at, we could still look at every, every year. So I'm not necessarily saying they shouldn't be obligated to, let's take their funding, whatever, how much they have and divide it by X amount of years and do it throughout those years. I'm just saying for the year to come, whether it's this year or next year, whatever, we can fund it. And then you can revisit that. Essentially every year, like, what is gonna come out of their funding, or is gonna come out of the general fund? So you, I wouldn't obligate, I wouldn't obligate them to to do it every year.
The other thing is, is I would also like clarification, because it's my understanding, if my, if my memory serves me right, that previously, what Bernadette brought up as far as fundraising or
Sponsorships.
Sponsorships, that Pat, you might remember this. Previous Park and Recs were told that they could not get sponsorships, but if we brought it back up here to the city level, we could get sponsorships.
That's correct.
So if that stands in place, that's also an, an area that we need to be
Yeah.
So
We have to get back to you on all those items and research that for you.
Yeah, so it sounds like there's still questions, and so it sounds that perhaps at this time, you you kind of sounds like you have two options, you can move forward with the budget as is, and then at a later time, once these questions are answered and more information is provided to you, at that point, you can bring an amendment to the budget. Or at this time, if you are ready, you can go ahead and approve the budget and make the necessary changes that are needed.
Well, because we can budget for it, but not necessarily have the event.
Correct, so what we could do is put it in the line item and then budget for it, and then if we need to make any changes, bring it back. And then bring this research back.
And then with regards to the second one, my only questions would be is from what funding it's coming from. So we're trying to locate and see how that's gonna look, but can that be part of the directive? It's to, with regards to the wages, looking at where the fund, giving direction to look at.
We we can entertain that, we can set aside in a budget line item for the general cost and then bring back specifics and and line item out each position and whatnot. If that's worked for the council.
So if there's no more questions, I'll make a motion to accept the budget with the amended three hundred, well, three hundred thousand dollars.
It's a set aside line budgets for wages and for a second item.
The other music festival.
So do, I guess, just my question is, do you have to have it, for example, say for even like the festival? If we don't know where the funding is, we can still vote to have it included in the budget and then kind of figure it out?
Well, right now, we have it, we can line item it for the general fund, because we have, we know there's revenues, there are funds there in the general fund, and then reallocate it later, bring it back for final approval from the council.
And is that the same for the wages as well?
Yes.
The general fund, until we identify other?
Correct.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Essentially, what you're doing, you put in, let's take the 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 festival, you put it in the budget, right? Because you have it in the budget, there's nothing to say that you have to have the event, one. Two, there's nothing to say that we can't find an alternate funding source and use that funding source instead of the the twelve thousand that's set aside, quote unquote, in the budget.
And that's the same for the wages, it's just reserving that, but not necessarily using it, okay?
Yes.
So, okay, I make that motion again with adding those two line items of twelve thousand direct to the, the music festival and the three hundred thousand for wages.
Yeah, I'll second. Oh, yeah, so so the motion was made by, Mr. Pat Kearney, that we adopt the annual budget with the the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three with the addition of two line items, including three hundred K for for wages as well as approximately twelve thousand for a music festival. Is there any questions or comments on the motion? Would the council please vote?
For item number eleven, the motion passes unanimously with council member Cuevas absent.
City Mayor, okay, now jumping down to, okay, with that, item eleven, we have finished our agenda. We are item K, they're adjourned, right? I didn't miss anything, right? Okay. So the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM, Monday, July eighteenth in these here chambers, it's now eight, quarter to eight, we are hereby adjourned.